Because you came on as an alternate, but because you're here and the others aren't, then you would be becoming a voting member. I've told everyone here, he's the mining expert.
We had two people missing last meeting.
Are you going to?
Yeah.
Love recording that. You're welcome to give it to me as well.
A little bit.
I'm doing well.
How about you?
Yeah.
Okay, we ready?
Not trying to be antisocial by sitting down this way.
That's okay. All right, good evening. Thanks for being here. We'll go ahead and get started. I think we're all here. We're trying to get Julie Martin online through Zoom. Don't know if that's going to happen or not, but you got four of us here anyway. So, I'm Bob Hinke, I'm the Chair. Joe Chambers on my left, your right, and Bob Perry, who is an alternate but a voting member tonight because we're missing a couple of people. And then Michael Fortune. And I've asked Michael if he would lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
He asked.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Okay, the first item is approval of the minutes. The Planning Commission will consider approval of the minutes from September 24th. And I was absent for that one, so I'll leave it up to... Any thoughts on the minutes? Any concerns?
I didn't see anything with, anything where it needed to be any changes or anything.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Bob, did you see anything?
Nope.
Nope.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September, or was that?
Sep- uh, 24th. Twenty-fourth, yep.
Twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, we have a motion. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Michael seconds a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, at this time, we have public comment. This does not relate to the, um, the public hearing. So we'll give anybody a chance that would like to share a public comment, express their views on issues within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. We accept by in-person, or if there's any emails or anything else, nothing else that you received. Is there anybody who would like to make a public comment that does not relate to the hearing? Okay, what we do. If you'll state your name, please.
My name's Paul Holden. I had your chair for a number of years in the nineties. So, in this development, I live on Grandview Drive, and they're now redoing the road and they've put in seven lots along the side. And for, as far as I know, none of us up there were notified that was going on, and we have no idea when it was approved. Was that approved ten years ago when that whole subdivision was approved? And how do you notify us? And like, for the hearing tonight, you put a sign up on the corner, but that's about it, huh?
I don't know if Ryan or Scarlett would like to address that.
Passing the buck.
Yeah, I am.
That's a good, that's a good job.
I'm in charge, so I'm passing the buck. Scarlett, do you want to?
The state code has changed significantly since you were on the, the Planning Commission, and they've made subdivisions very administrative, so we don't hold public hearings on them anymore. The preliminary plat was discussed and approved by the Planning Commission. I think it was approved about a year ago, maybe a little longer than that. And then, there are fifteen, not fifteen more phases, but a total of fifteen phases, including the two that have been, the three that have been built, and now they're working on phase four and five. So there's ten more phases to go. They do have to come in with each individual final plat per phase and construction drawings, but the way the state code is now, that is all done administratively. So there's no more public comment on the final plat and the construction drawings.
You need to keep up in whatever the minutes are, whatever these folks are going to be doing. You're not letting neighbors know anymore that something's going on across the street.
Well, we do agenda the preliminary plat, yes. We, that's on the agenda, but once it gets past preliminary plat, then it stays administrative. That, that was a change that state code made, I think, two years ago. You bet.
Thank you, Scarlett. She's the expert.
She hasn't been for long.
Yes, she has. All right, any other comment? Okay, well, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we'll go to the public hearing. Item two, the PCC addition. Ten nine eight mining and similar activities, public hearing. The Providence City Planning Commission will take comment and questions from the public regarding a proposed new code to the Providence City Code. Ten nine eight mining and similar activities. Michael, do you mind getting those papers, I guess?
Sure.
Chair, if I might, might have a minute to open up a discussion about it before you go to open in invitation of all the residents?
Sure.
Just to kind of give an update of, of what it is, I, I realize the Planning Commission, this is the second time you're hearing this. There was a, a previous meeting on the introduction of a, of a mining ordinance, and then you chose to, you selected to have a, have this public hearing tonight. One of the items, th- this is an item that was in ordinance, and when we did our codification, which is a, we go, we go through and kind of clean up different codes that match state code and, and kind of clean up all of that, through that codification process and through the processes. This particular section wasn't brought through that codification, so to add it back would be a ordinance process, which includes the meeting you had before to introduce it as a study item. This meeting to have a public hearing, we have a public hearing on all ordinances. So any ordinance that, that goes through, we have a public hearing on. And so this is bringing back that code that was there with some very minor changes and updates that make it into current, current code, which is like, instead of the city council reviewing it, it's the administrative land use that would hear conditional use permit. So there's a few technical changes, but this is bringing that code and returning it back into codification, into our current code. So this is, this is nearly matching what, what this code was previously. This is about the regulation to apply to, to gravel pits or temporary pits. We don't, no, no permanent pit is allowed. This is a temporary permit and a temporary regulation. So, anyway, just kind of an update of, of what this one is. This one won't affect the, what's, what the preliminary plots approved for any, any of subdivisions. As the staff looked, we looked along the, the east bench, and we said, there is the potential of the Highlands, there's the potential at, at the Dan Hogan property there above Sherwood, and then there is another property. There are a number of properties along the east bench that this code could apply to at some point, and so that's why, that's why it's being brought up, is we're saying, oh, you know, there is something going on that we'd maybe like to, as a staff, we'd like to regulate a bit more. And, and there, and there is a few future possibilities along that bench, and we're saying, you know, the code probably needs to be brought back in, so we have a, have a means and a method to have certain regulations and, and things, and processes for people to go through if they want to, to achieve this. So tonight, we can't change preliminary plat. We can't change the final plat for the two that are approved. No, only four and five phases are currently approved, so all the rest would have to come through approve, an approval process. But, so anyway, this is, this is about the, the, the means and method of regulating what this operation would, would be. So, anyway, just to kind of give an update of, of kind of what that is and, and how it made its way to tonight, to kind of give a little bit of update.
Good, appreciate that. Scarlett, do you, would you like to share anything about the, the code and the proposed code?
Well, previous to May seventh, the state code was a little stricter on mining operations, and they made some changes in May that also made it imperative that we put something back into our code. They're quite a bit more liberal on critical infrastructure materials, and so that's the other reason along, that's one of the, the leading factors, is that when the state decided they wanted to be more liberal, we felt like we still needed to be a little bit more restrictive. So, and the other thing that it does add, we, in our previous code, we were not quite so specific on certain things that we are now going to require going forward, such as traffic plans and an air quality plan approved by the Division of Air Quality, those type of things. Used to be more covered in a different area in state code, and, and now we are putting them into ours to make sure that nothing is missed. So, that's really what it is. It's just keeping up with the state changes and making sure that we've got the regulations that we feel like we need.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay. Any other comments here before we, or questions?
I have a couple of questions. So, you had Stan Chekot's development up there on the hill, and they moved quite a bit of dirt around. Would it have triggered application to, to that subdivision at the time, just moving the dirt within the subdivision?
Excuse me, moving the dirt is covered under our regular construction plans, and they do have to provide, they do have to go through the stormwater process that's controlled by the EPA to control dust and dirt and debris on the road and whatnot. But this is a little bit more in-depth than that even.
This is where they're, they've got excess material, they want to make a subdivision plan, and they're going to be exporting material.
Correct.
Which is the reason for the traffic plan?
Yes.
On impacting the community with a bunch of trucks going up and down the hill.
Right. Well, it'll impact, but at least we will know the plan, and we can let people know and things like that. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood.
Yes, no, they can still move dirt on their own property as long as, if they're going through the subdivision process, or like a farmer or somebody like that. That's not, this isn't going to impact that. That's covered under different areas in the code.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we'll open it up for comment then. Matt Barrett?
Gentlemen, how you doing tonight?
Good.
I'll introduce myself, you, you just did. Some of the folks in the room here got together Sunday night, and about ten or twelve other residents, just to kind of get a little organized and focused. So the first burst of questions you get tonight are from me, but it's a, a quick walk through, through some of those questions, and I've got some, some neighbors who will follow me, but I'm just, I want to emphasize that these, what you're about to hear don't reflect just my question set. It's a group question set. And before I, before I step through those, is quickly, like I said, I think I've got, we had eight, but some additional research by some of us have knocked two off the board from what I have. Quick shout out, Scarlett. I have visitor, visited her, I think, thirty-seven times in the last three weeks. It's a slight exaggeration, but she's been extremely helpful, so thanks to that. Only the first question has a little bit of setup. The others are straightforward, but the reason for the, for a little bit of the setup in the, that will lead me to our first question, I think will quickly become apparent, is those who live up there observed what appeared to be road grading and lot preparation shift to gravel pit mining type operations. Understandably, we wondered what, what's up. And so part of the research package was to look through across the state what some of the other counties are doing as far as regulating this type of operation. So I'm going to give you a couple of snapshots on those, and I'll get to my question. So Duchesne County has two setback standards for aggregate operations. One thousand three hundred and twenty feet for rock crushing must be a minimum of this distance from any town, city, or residential use. It's got to be six hundred and sixty feet from the closest home. And then fifty feet setback is required from any property line. Morgan County, five hundred foot setback for all mining operations. Extraction, crushing, crushing, stockpiling, sorting, transporting, which is what is occurring up there. Tuila County, minimum is a thousand feet. Operations located more than a thousand feet from the existing residential zones. In, in such cases, some of the requirements can be, can be waived. And Tuila County, that is Tuila County. Sully County, you know, significant public pressure regarding gravel pits, to the point a few years ago, county passed an ordinance banning completely new mines in the Wausatch foothills, preemptive action to stop a specific quarry. Cash County, I don't know what it is, you know, what we could pick around and, and find out was at least five hundred feet from the closest residence. This is what we're experiencing up on Eight Hundred East. The closest gravel mound on the oper- operations on the south part of Eight Hundred East, and that, that gravel mound is, I went out and did some measurements early this week. It's roughly twenty-five feet high, has a base span run on of almost eighty feet, fourteen feet to the property line of the closest house. It's forty-three feet, eleven inches to the house itself. That's not even the ballpark of, of anything we could find as far as regulations go. Garbage stacks, four, four feet, seven inches from the residence property, and thirty-three feet, seven inches to the house itself. So here's the question, and the rest of, the rest of these are going to be pretty straightforward pretty quick. How did this developer get away with violating ordinances common across the state for this many weeks? This is a gravel pit operation, it's extracting, it's processing, it's crushing, sifting, stockpiling, and then it's loading and transporting out for, for sale. And so we, we, we have an understandable question. How the heck did, how is this still going on? You know, why is, why is this operation in those gravel mounds and the garbage, you know, still in such close proximity to the house? First question. Second question. When will this activity end? And again, when will the stockpiles be removed, brought into proximity requirements common across the state, probably for our county? The safety aspect of this, to us who live up close to it, particularly those with young children, has been appalling. We have counted, and we've been systematic about this, sixty-plus two-way double-body gravel trucks driving in and out of Eight Hundred East daily, and the drivers routinely exceed the speed limit. We don't have radar guns, but, you know, you can ballpark, that's not going through, that's not going twenty-five miles an hour. And by the way, the house that I just mentioned, which is under forty-five feet in proximity to these operations, has, has three children, two of them are pretty young. So, what traffic and other restrictions will be imposed on the developer as he proceeds north with whatever he's doing, north of a thousand south and eight hundred east? And I've, you know, I've heard you mention that you were going to impose some safety ordinances for starters. It's fantastic. What approved development is coming, is coming at the south end of Eight Hundred East and northward across one thousand south from Eight Hundred East. Playground coming to, coming on the north side, it's Providence City paying for the playground, there's a developer doing that as part of the development access to the permits and other things you have conveyed on him so he can proceed. This one's a little bit off the map, no pun intended, and I'm, I'm almost done here with these questions. What is the current plan and expected timing for connecting Eight Hundred East to Grandview Drive? And once that's done, presumably it will be, since it's in Millville territory, has there been an agreement between Providence and Millville regarding which of the two will maintain that into perpetuity? Just wonder if that's clear. The last one is roughly half of Grandview Drive, at least a third, a third of, of Grandview Drive, north of a thousand south, the surface itself is, is a mess, and I think this gets maybe some of the things that you raised. When will, when will it again be a fully paved street unaffected by development operation? So that's the last question I have. But just an, an observation. I, I wonder whether the, the city in recent years has had the idea of just posting on this, on the city website what's happening around Providence, so we don't have any of these sorts of major events in, in our areas, we don't have a clue what's going on here? How long will this go on here? Why is this going on here? Have we ever had anything like that before, Scarlett?
We do.
We do, is it on there now?
I think we've got the page on there now. I know it was on there a few months ago, so...
You know, just from a, just from a...
I haven't gone on and looked to see if it's updated, but I know we've had it on there.
I mean, a couple of questions tonight could be answered by something like that. We have angst, wondering how long a gravel pit operation is going to be proceeding, forty-five feet from a house, another week, two weeks? If, he has halted the operation there, but you still got, you know, mountains of gravel forty-five feet from a home. So, I invite you just to consider that.
Do you have a copy of those questions?
I do. Want me, I, I can email them to you, I can lay them on there right now. How about if I go home and I email them to you? What are your druthers?
Well, I just hope to answer maybe a few. I, I mean, if the chair's, but after the public hearing, if you want, but... But, but there's nothing that he said that's within the scope of the public hearing, and I don't mean to be rude. You're fine. But, but all the questions you asked are not the subject of what we're, we're here for a public hearing, and I am not trying to be aggressive when I say this.
No, no, that's not a problem. I'm talking about the gravel pit operation?
Well, no, we're not talking about that gravel pit operation.
Okay.
We're talking about an ordinance. This is my understanding of the law, okay? Other people can disagree with me, but this is just my viewpoint on it. If there is no ordinance in place, there is no restriction on a landowner to use his property and his property rights as he wants to use them. We don't have an ordinance for a gravel pit. That's the problem. That's what we're trying to solve going forward. It's risen through this project up at you, and we want to stop it from affecting other operations because the, the city council, as I understand it, the last gravel pit that was in Providence was LeGrand Johnson's gravel pit up the canyon. And when he ceased to do that, there's never been a gravel pit here. So all these problems that you mentioned, which I, I relate to, I, I represent a couple of aggregate operations in Weber County, and trucking, and going past Weber High School, runaway trucks, fortunately not my client, but independents hauling out of the pit, was a very serious problem. And, and I, I understand that it's a problem in your neighborhood, but all the problems you raised really need to go to the city administration, because we don't, as a planning commission, have those answers. What we're here to do is take a look at a proposed ordinance, see if we can improve it and get public input to get it on the books, so we don't have a second aggregate operation going on.
I'll, I'll just argue that...
Without us being able to regulate.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just argue that I think virtually everything I shared is utterly relevant to, to deciding whether the ordinances you're imposing are sufficient. That's all. I mean, this is, these are the details of the life up there, so if you're going to impose ordinances on the kind of business, that's all.
But the way you posed the question, it's with regards to that operation there. And that's what I'm trying to reframe it and say, the questions have to be, how, how do we adjust this ordinance to prevent that type of...
Absolutely. No, I mean, I, I think, I think that's the bottom line. We sure as hell don't want this just kind of popping up in Providence City again, and people going, what is going on here, folks?
But unfortunately, that landowner had no restrictive ordinance.
Yeah.
And he has the right to use his property the way he...
Does he? If we, if we called some state inspectors in and said, hey, look around, what's jumping out at you?
There are state regulations.
That, no, because zoning is an interesting thing, and, and this is how I see it, and, you know, I've had to look at it. The city has safety regulations.
Mm-hmm.
Speed limits, you know, overweight trucks, and they have zoning regulations in terms of what you can do on your property. They haven't abandoned, if this operation is, is causing a nuisance, and I'm not trying to give legal advice, but if they're, if they're causing a nuisance.
Right.
The city can regulate that, and you should let the city officials know that if it's a zoning issue, that, as far as I can determine, that, that's already, you know, the, the, the horses have left the barn, cows have left the barn on that one. We're trying to close the door on future ones. And I don't mean to, I apologize if I'm occupying too much time.
No, 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 this is, no, this is helpful stuff, Joe. What's your sense, again, though, of, at, I mean, this type of operation technically should be registered within the state, period, wherever it is, I think, within the state of Utah. If you're doing a mining or gravel operation, you need to register that within, at the state level. Is that not, is that not accurate?
I think Dogma, Division of Oil, Gas.
Yes, exactly.
Mining regulates it.
That's what I'm saying. If he's, so therefore, forget, forget where in the...
So does, so does air quality control.
Right.
Because I'm dealing with a matter right now where we're having to have crushers tested, making sure we're not putting out too much pollution.
You see where I'm going with this, so just take Providence City and, and brush it off the table. From a state perspective, is this dude observing the regulations and the guidance that he should be, considering the kind of operation he's proceeding? My sense is he is not. Forget Providence City.
I've not gone up and looked at it, I've just heard about it, so I don't know anything, and I apologize.
No, no, that's fine. I'm, I'm telling you, I'm, I am no expert, but my reading of it, he is not meeting state requirements. Forget what we want to do. That's all.
Well, I, I can tell you, air quality control department and environmental is all over my client in a small operation down in Willard.
Yeah.
And so...
You're helping me, you're helping me make my point.
They'll, they'll be glad to look at it if someone gives them a complaint, to make sure that there's not air quality control violations. My client down in Willard is, got a water truck going. I went down and inspected it. They made me wear a hard hat because I showed up without a hard hat, because of OSHA laws, and they've got the water truck going constantly. If they're not doing that, if they're not controlling it, the city has not abandoned their nuisance and their, and their other regulations.
I think Elizabeth, if I'm, some of the research you did, it looked like it was state level, was it?
It was state.
It was a five hundred, it was a five hundred foot standback based on some stuff she looked at, period, and stop. All right, let me get off the stage. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, though.
Yes, thank you. And appreciate, Joe, appreciate your comments. We'll make further comments and ask some questions, but let's go ahead and continue with the comments. Brent Crohn's?
Cromer. In elementary school, it was bent.
Cromer.
So I go by a different name.
Okay.
The driving point basically of the gravel pits is all driven by, of course, the ability to put together this project. I wish to address some things with this project and try to back up Matt with what he has said. I thank you for reviewing everything. I come to you as the president of the Providence Highland Community Association, HOA, representing about properties, many of which is border to the development of the south Grandview Drive. Our community is seeking clarity from you. Our community is seeking clarity from you. I understand that one aspect of your role is to review and approve the preliminary plat during the subdivision process. And I just learned, I guess the final has been approved. I have reviewed a drawing entitled the preliminary plat. This is what I was given, and I think you have all seen it. And it was the preliminary one, which I have faced my information off of. But I have reviewed the drawing entitled preliminary plat of the Providence Highland subdivision. I am here to ask for approval for it not to be approved or for it to be amended. Why? The plan proposes a connector road at the south end of eight hundred east, which would circle it around to Grandview Drive. According to Melville city officials today, this road has not received approval. Communication with Pamela June, council member for Melville Planning and Zoning, confirmed that the road has not been approved. There has been various states, statements, rumors regarding this proposal. But it is not approved. Additionally, a regulation has been enacted allowing no more than twenty houses to be constructed at one time. And the road, and if it is eventually approved, the city said it would manage the road. Second. While recently maintaining our HOA pavilion area in the far south end, I observed two large deer. Bucks, I presume, with an answers. Near Mr. Jensen's development, formerly their feeding grounds, they were in a clump of oak. And. I would imagine that they were talking to each other. They would be looking at that crusher and that shredders and they were, excuse me, the scalpers and the heavy equipment. And I imagine those two deer would be saying, you know, what is happening? There goes my feeding grounds up above. Formerly our person by the name of Joel Peterson installed a temporary fence south of Grandview Drive on Melville property. And in the winter introduced some, for his horses, introduced some hay by his boys. And it turned out that a lot of moose came down and it was kind of like, if you will, the hardware ranch. After researching, I found that the far southeast corner where Mr. Jensen plans to build homes. Two species of concern for Cache County and Providence area. According to the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources and the Utah Natural Heritage Program, the region includes federally licensed species. They are Canadian lynx, yellow-billed cockatoo, cute ladies trusses, it's, it's basically an orchard. Western toad. Northern gushak, buck, excuse me. Why is the southeast Providence ecologically important? The southeast portion of the Providence borders foothill terrain. Seasonal drainages and underground open spaces which are serviced for wildlife corridors, breeding grounds, and migration paths. It will all be impacted if you look at your plot two. Report on endangered species is requested prior to proceeding with further development. We would like to see that and see how that is addressed. Environmental. Yes, a hundred home plus subdivision Providence, Utah will require environmental and infrastructure review as part of the city's subdivision approval process. While a formal environmental impact report, that's called an EIR, may not be mandated by state. Local ordinances and Cache County regulations do require environmental considerations. Here's the breakdown. Local oversight, Providence City regulates subdivisions under Title XI of its Land Use Code, which outlines zoning, density, infrastructure, and environmental standards. Subdivision improvements plan requires that the preliminary or final application per HB forty-four seven six. And then environmental considerations Providence must follow. No blanket EIR's requirement, but environmental review is embedded in the city and needs to see these reports before construction can begin. Stormwater management plans is required. Flood plane and drainage assessments. There is possibility of some storms that come up and you're going to see basically some flooding. If you remember Salt Lake City. Some years ago. Traffic impact studies, we don't know that they have been done. Obviously, we have seen trucks go back and forth, have not seen those. We need a traffic impact study. Utility and road infrastructure plans and sensitive areas such as deep slopes and wildlife may trigger additional comments. Interesting county level restriction, Cache County moratorium as of July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Cache County has a temporary moratorium on new subdivisions with more than five buildable lots. Unless the application was submitted before that date. That I can't tell you. But if it hasn't, there's a moratorium that's out. In summary. No connector road allowed to my Melville. That was important. Did not find mitigation protection for endangered species. No mention of embedded environmental review addressing stormwater, which is important to us because basically we've got a storm dream coming into the Providence Highlands. Pavilion, basically into our Cache Basin. And our members. Have to pay to get that material removed. So stormwater is very important to us. Utility road infrastructure plans or wildlife corridors need to be addressed. Until the public can see these reports, we're asking the planning commission and the city council not to approve. The preliminary or the final plat and stock this project. That concludes. My questions and observations. And I hope that you will take as a planning commission, I hope you will take that intact. And look and see if you can do something and help us with that and on this project, which is very detrimental to us. And a report to our seventy home members too, we're looking for that information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, can I invite you to do something else as well? Your notes and so forth, if you wouldn't mind. I mean, they could be submitted, emailed in to just be a part of the record. I think that would be good. That that information would, would, would be presented for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead with Elizabeth Call.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Call, thanks for hearing me. I'll try to keep my comments to the ordinance being proposed. So just some things in going through. I would like to say, if we have a choice, we can put an ordinance in. Or can, do we have the option to say, we don't want any mining options for subdivisions in the future? What benefit does this mining operation prove to anyone but the developer? Because the Stan Chekets development that I believe is Providence Hollows and Little Baldi, they've been moving dirt around, being able to make their roads. They haven't had any gravel pit, any crushing, any hauling out in this quantity. And that development has gone very smoothly. They've been able to put all their homes and they have not needed a gravel pit operation. So if possible, I would vote, and I believe most of the people behind me would vote, to not allow a gravel pit at all. Make the ordinance not allowed. Because it has, as you've heard, been a huge headache for all the people up there, all the people concerned. Also, one of the things in here with the safety and the trucking. The regulations from seven AM to five PM, nine AM to six PM of hours of trucking. I think that needs to be revisited, especially because this is in a residential area in Providence. We have a lot of children. I know up in our area specifically, the school bus stop for Providence City or Providence Elementary had to be moved because of these trucks. The kids are now having to go farther to get to their bus. I don't know about you, if you have any more young kids, I know you have one. But the hours of when they're home from school till six PM, that's peak outside playing time. And I don't know if any of you want your grandchildren running around the street with enormous semi trucks going well over the speed limit. That is a concern I have in your ordinance here. I don't, I think these rules work really great in, in something that's zoned for industrial, these, these timeframes. I'm not sure they work the same as in a residential. So that would be something to be, that I think could merit a re, a second look. But I don't understand, I understand putting in an ordinance for sure. I think that is very needed, especially because we don't have one. I don't understand why we want to make it so that mining. I, I guess I don't understand what critical infrastructure material means. Because they're saying this is critical to the development of the neighborhood and the infrastructure of that. Road making process. And that's what I don't understand, why we need to be able to allow the gravel pit to start at all in the future. Because it has been such a headache of where we are. So I've seen several other developments in Providence City going, like I mentioned, and they haven't had to do this. They are also on slopes. They've also got really awesome dirt there. But it hasn't been a necessity. So what makes, what defines critical infrastructure material? What makes it so that we have to do the crushing, the sorting, and get all the heavy mining equipment up in a residential area? And have a commercial operation happening in a residential area? Like a, there, and this safety situation, there's nothing about fencing around neighborhood or around streets. Homes, anything along those lines. Because that definitely hasn't been happening. You said you had to wear a hard hat when you signed, when you went to yours. There is not even a safety boot being worn at what is happening. So definitely the safety regulations, and if you do decide to move forward with an ordinance allowing mining. I think the safety regulations need to be a lot more strict. There's nothing closing it off. Kids are entering this area all the time. Kids are climbing these gravel pits and it's like sand. If you get in too deep, if you dig too big of a hole, you're going to get trapped inside. I know kids have gotten injured and wiped out on their bikes and been hurt. And so my concerns are the safety things in here are really wonderful for a commercial use. But this is in residential area and the safety concerns are not enough. For this ordinance. I don't, especially if these gravel pits, if you plan on, you said something about a sure, something above Sherwood. You looked at the bench and could see above Sherwood Drive, this could potentially happen there. There's also. Someone, someone said that over in this area. I don't know.
I just, I'm trying to get to the right person.
You said, and so if there are lots of homes around there. I definitely think the safety measures as a mom of young kids, a mom of very active boys, it makes me nervous. That the safety measures in here seem very loose for the areas that you guys would be implementing this ordinance.
Your, your concern about the kids is legitimate because Dane Mosher.
Yeah. Like, I don't think, I mean.
Victim of his father accidentally dumping a load. And the Moschers are up above me.
Yeah.
I mean.
There's nothing protecting this gravel right now. There's nothing. I mean, during operations, this is an open place. There's nothing fencing it off. There's nothing, people can walk in and there still has, they still have a rock crusher going. There's nothing protecting, I, I, we're building up there, so we're not officially there. But my son has made friends with someone who's on the street and their little kiddo went over in the heavy machinery when no one was there and turned one of the machines on. And that should not be allowed to happen. So those are my concerns. I don't feel like this ordinance is meeting those concerns. And if there's a way to stop the, make the, make the ordinance, we don't want mining allowed so close to a residential. And that would be ideal.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Okay. Joni Christensen.
I just have some thoughts as far as I really like her safe. I have the same issues with the safety because I have young kids as well. And so I just think that as part of the ordinance, if we could just make sure. That there are people monitoring it on a very regular basis to make sure that those safety standards are implemented. That would be ideal. And then also just one thing that I. Was curious about is that we have people who are building on our street and they are kept to certain standards as far as cleanup goes. But these, this gravel pit business has not been. Like they're, they're, they have, they have way more dirt and gravel on our streets than any of these houses that have been building have ever had. And yet those houses are coming and being talked to about it. And then this is not, like, they're not being talked to about cleaning up after themselves. So I think that should be considered. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Hey, thank you. Okay, that's who had signed up to make a comment, but I know a couple of people came in late. Is there, if, is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? Okay. Oh, okay.
Sandy Barrett. I'm just kind of speaking on behalf of the neighbors up there and everybody who's dealt with this for, gosh, three months plus. One thing that was mentioned was that maybe going forward in the ordinance is, is I talked to the foreman up there one day and he was telling me that. I said, you know, you guys are bringing trucks up here at seven fifteen. He goes, oh, no, they're, they're not, they don't come till eight. Oh, oh, no. They're there at seven fifteen. I have a ring camera that records them. We're right at the end of the road. So maybe possibly if you're going to go ahead with some ordinance, make sure that's. You know, it's not just disruptive. It's like was said here, it's when the little kids are getting ready to go to school and they're outside and they're walking to the bus. And it's pretty, it's pretty bad. We haven't had air quality, we haven't had good air quality for two months. None of us can open our windows or screens or doors at all. It's constant dust. And the house on the very end that is the closest to this, the biggest mountain of gravel, it's not dirt. So it's not going to be used, it's gravel. It's twice as high as her house and it's literally right next to it. And it's, it's scary for the rest of us to watch that kind of what's going to happen. And there's kids all over. And as you know, up in our area, there's four wheel, you know, there's motorcycles and all kinds of stuff going everywhere. And I, I feel like it's a matter of time in a situation like that for something, you know, something very bad to happen. And in that case, Providence City could also be liable. If, if codes aren't matched or ordinances aren't made. Because, you know, if that's the job and that has to happen, so that's just my thought. I feel like people here have been incredibly patient. It just got to the point where we're like, some, this is not right and something has to be done. So that's kind of where we're coming from. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Last call, anybody else? All right. Well, we appreciate you being here and the comments, they've been very insightful. If there's no other comments, then we'll close this portion of the meeting. The, the public hearing. And let me get back to my agenda, I was typing some notes there. So item three. Now Providence City Planning Commission review, discuss, and may make recommendation to the city council. Regarding a proposed new code to the Providence City Code ten-nine-eight mining and similar activities. We'll go to that part then. And Scarlett, do you have anything you want to share at this time?
Well, I took notes.
Okay.
So. But I do think adding a statement about onsite inspections, making sure the truck hours, the fencing signage, those type of things. They, I think that I can put those in there if you want to continue it so that you can see them added in there. That's great. If not, I still would put them in there before it. Goes to city council if you decide to make a recommendation one way or the other. And.
Can I interrupt you? Just so the audience knows what, what you just said, because it went up pretty fast.
Sorry.
This body, this body can only make a recommendation.
Yes.
And, and if we recommend to adopt the strictest ordinance, the city council can accept that recommendation, reject it, or anywhere in between that spectrum, do what they want. So you still need to talk to your city council people politely. But let them know what your feelings are. Cause we're just making a recommendation.
We were told to start here, so this is where we're at.
You're right, you're in the right place.
There's some irony in it.
Yeah.
The, the city council doesn't hold a public hearing. We do. But they listen to the minutes and, and things. They're not being negligent in the, in their duties. I'm just saying that we, we have no authority, but we get to have the public hearing. There's an irony in there to me. Scarlett, while you've got the floor, what about this recommendation? Would, would the city attorney be able to, to give input to you to just have an ordinance that there will be absolutely no aggregate operations in the city limits? Cause that's what I'm hearing the public wants. Public that's shown up here.
I think we could probably do that. I'd have to check with him and see what he thinks.
Bringing another one back to you with that as a discussion.
That's.
Know what this one is, but we could bring another one back. With that, I mean, or the other thing is, is if you tell us what, I mean, I, Scarlett made notes, I made some notes and, and if we come back to that, uh, if you tell us what items you want maybe looked at and included, we could take that back and, and bring another version back to you. And maybe another one that was an option that was two, two ordinances, one that is a, is a none, and one is a modification of regulation. I, I think we could bring those back. It'll be up to the council thing.
Yeah, it's their decision.
But, but you are the access. We'd like to facilitate what you would like us to do from staff perspective. So if you have certain things you want to include, um, you know, I think Scarlett mentioned some, I have a few. But I would be interested if there was things that the public mentioned that you say, hey, you know, these ought to be listed as, as things, let's take a look. Steph could certainly go back and, and, and add or, or modify some if you were so inclined to, to give us that direction or.
And the distance from the residential structures. I forgot to mention that when I was going through.
I think turning on the equipment, that's a, that's one I noted. I didn't like to hear that.
No, I didn't like to hear that.
That's scary. So, so we're, we're done with public input, but I'm gonna give Elizabeth's call a chance to.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
With what you were talking.
Will you, will you grab that mic just because it's being recorded?
I think as residents of Providence City, if you proposed an ordinance that there was no mining in residentially zoned areas or residential areas, that would go a lot further with the city council than just banning all mining. Because if you mine in a commercially zoned area or something like that, that's a lot different than mining in a residentially zoned or a neighborhood. Cause this is a neighborhood. There are no shops. There are no anything else. It's just homes.
That's good input. Thank you. I'm glad I let you comment very good.
This ordinance is really easy. You reduce pages to no.
So. Well, and that's what I, I want to ask. I, I, I want to make sure we know if we're, if we can do that by state law.
We'll have to check.
Yeah. What's that?
Yeah, they did. I, I mentioned that.
That's right. You did. That's right.
When, when did they do that? Prior to the.
Yeah, I'll look up. Did law change it, the state?
Yeah.
Change the laws, like, like people like to change their underwear? So it may be different and we'll need to check and see what, um, what it is. And we'll have our attorney, we could certainly have our attorney look at, look at that.
Yeah. Thank you. Scarlett, you were gonna make a comment about?
Well, I think, I think that the thing that would still happen is when they start grading, they may not crush, but they will still haul material if they have more material than they need.
Yeah.
And that, we, we probably want to put something in about that maybe in a different part of our code, in the actual subdivision ordinance on traffic plan. Because, and while, uh, the, it's correct that there wasn't a gravel pit over on the north side, they did haul a lot of material in and they moved literally mountains around. It was just that the residential area that they were, they were, it was a big enough project that the residential area was a little bit further away, but some parts not. But they didn't do the crushing over there. But they did do an awfully lot of hauling and an awfully lot of dirt mitigate, or moving of dirt. The same developer, um, back in the early, the mid two thousands, two thousand five, something like that, they did the same thing that they do now, that they did this time when they created the existing homes on, Forgotten Lane and that are in phase one and two that they talked about. They set up a temporary crushing, different operator back then on the crushing unit. But they did set up a temporary crushing unit back then. But that was back when we had the mining ordinance in place and we worked through that and did the conditions and stuff. One comment I want to make is, once a plan is presented and approved and it goes through the process, then it is approved. The city doesn't have the ability to put, to go back and say, we want to look at this preliminary plot again. So, we, we will make sure, they did have to do, um, studies. In fact, they ended up, they aren't building them yet because they're not far enough along in their phasing to do it. They haven't disrupted enough other area, but they, they had to do a study of flood waters coming off of the mountainside. And they have to put in several debris ponds because of that. They had to do study, they had to do, um, geostick, a fault line study. Um, they found location of where, pretty good location of where they think it is. So they, they have, and each one of these phases had had to do a stormwater management. They file a notice of intent with the EPA, which means they intend to start moving dirt and things. And they have to have what's called a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And that they, he's done that for both of his phases. So, while the, the frustrating thing for the public is subdivisions are administrative. And once a property is zoned, then that's kind of when the public hearing gets to be and everything else. And now then as long as they follow the rules of the subdivision ordinance, if they meet those rules, we have to approve it. And so that's just the way the state code is. It's very developer friendly. And, um, but he did, they did have to do, we did not ignore environmental when we looked through that preliminary plot. Now, the wildland management area is east of that. So, we didn't have them do a wildland management plan because that's a little bit east where the, where his property line is. The road, um, is on his private property. It is not, it is built, it is to be constructed. And I haven't gone up there. Ryan, have you been up there recently to know how the?
I was up there today.
The circle down to Grandview Drive? Were you that far south?
Was not that far south, but I know they got the curb and gutter to extend, um, that street. But I have not seen the Millville Loop, if you're asking.
Yes, the Millville Loop.
I have not, I have not been that far south today.
I walked down there yesterday. The curb and gutter goes right to the end of the last lot. And then all that's happened on that circle is just the original time they went over. It's ready and dirt and the curb and gutter doesn't go any further.
The initial grading.
Yeah.
So, so that, that is not considered a Millville city street? They, that it's in, it's in Millville, but it's not one of their city streets at this point in time. He does have a proposed development, um, with them. I know they've looked at it because they've called and asked me some questions about it several months ago. I don't know where they're at with it or anything. If they were to approve the development on his side, then they would have him change that. Probably the width of that road to make sure it meets their standards. But right now it's not being built to a full city street standard. It's being built to a public safety standard to be able to make sure that, um, EMS and fire and whatnot can get through and that vehicles could get through as an alternative to one thousand south east of Grandview Drive. So, that's, that's what about, that's what that road is. So no, Millville wouldn't not have accepted that as a public street because that's not how it's being utilized as far as Millville City is concerned. But it is on his property and they do know about it. The developers.
So that, that circle is Jeremy's property?
Yes.
In Millville?
Yes.
He just, that little part he bought?
Well.
He owned seventy acres in Millville.
Yes.
But south of the, of the fence?
Well, he owns seventy acres south of the end of Grandview Drive. And south of the end of, the current end of Eighth East. So, so that's how, that's why, um, the, that's the Millville Road story.
Good. Thank you. Brent?
Yes, after talking with the city council, or their councilwoman, basically, she said that that has not been approved. That basically Millville has not approved that extension. So we need to do a little more research apparently to figure out what's going on with that. Because if that goes, and that project hits the fan.
Okay. Thank you. So, um, the, so Scarlett, you had mentioned that we were kind of speeding this up as far as two weeks ago and then today. What impact would a, what impact would a mining policy, trying to think of the right word, but have on what's happening already with this project that we're talking about? Are they grandfathered in and under no mining policy? Or does, does what they do change if we create a policy? Does anybody know?
I, I'm gonna say that, that, you know, laws apply for the future. And that's what we do. We, I've, I've shared this ordinance with him and, and had a commitment that, that he would follow what it was. So, I mean, I, I don't know that that's enforceable at this point.
Right.
But, um, I, I've, I've asked that and then he's gone and said, hey, you know, here, here's a concern, here's some complaints, here's what's being proposed. And, and trying to make sure that one is aware and two, that, that, you know. I don't know if we can keep in mind, he, he doesn't have an approved, at this sta- stage, four is, is what's south of, of ten south, that's phase four. Uh, that curb and gutter is going into the end of the property, I believe. The curb and gutter to the end of the development is in, but not the loop. I haven't been that far, but.
It's just, it's just in dirt.
But he can't build anything on the loop. Cause that, because it's not in either, either road as a, as a developable. They can't build houses from, off that loop. And, uh, and so then the property on Grandview, um, is a seven, um, seven lots. And, uh, and of those seven lots that, it, once that is developed, there is no next phase approved. So, from a staff, if we have this approved sooner than later or a full restriction, but either of those options, then at that point we have more regulation. So at some point, if there is a law passed, then we have more regulation to, to follow. And the more regulation we have to follow that, that, that helps us in, in administering our job. Yet the phase six or wherever the next one is, um, hasn't been approved through the final plaque, through the administration process. And so at that point, this, once, once that pressure is done with the seven lots of their current, it has to go because there's no approved next spot for it. So it's not staying any longer than that. At least that, it's the current, especially if we have something passed. That's why, why we're looking at. And of those seven lots, that makes a difference, but the city owns or city has a contract buying the corner lot for a, for a future park, a three acre park, which the council's, um, approved. And, uh, and an option on this, on the seventh lot, uh, the city has an option to purchase it if funds become available and, and we can find a, a means to do that. So of this current one, um, the, the city has either, either purchase or, or, or option to buy two out of those seven lots. The widening of the road, um, is just procedurally, we expect that to be done by, by the end of, end, end of this season. So, my expectation, my expectation is, is this development with, with most of what's there is, is going to, when the, when that spell falls, that crusher is not gonna stay here for the winter. And they're gonna have, and, and as long as we get an ordinance one way or the other before that, that, before that spring occurs, that's our timeframe that we're trying to work on is saying, hey, I believe that machine will leave. It's, it's a rented machine, I think, and, and it will leave over the winter. I, I don't know anybody that's gonna hold on to one and make rent for the winter when they can't, potentially can't use it. So I'd like to see a, my recommendation to the planning commission if I have something is, find what that is so that in spring, if that comes back or doesn't come back, we have, we have to find what that is.
Yeah. So, yes. So the, what's happening right now, if we, if we came up with, uh, a mining policy or law that he, he would consider following that if it was, if it was, if there's,
This is.
If there's no mining, then obviously he won't. But, and he's grandfathered in, right? And at that point, at that point, the, um, all the things we've heard about safety and, and whatnot, we would hope that, uh, that could be.
Aren't there state laws though? Like the five hundred foot setback?
So state law, if there's a state issue, we need to get with a state regulator. We don't enforce on, on those. Well, some of that's above our, our enforcement. If there is a state regulation, uh, a violation, we need to get with the state regulators to, to do that. And there are state regulators specifically, M Shaw regulators specifically for, for managing mining and crushing operations. And if there is a state violation, we, we need to refer that to them. Cause they are, they are the enforcement body to do that and, and have the ability to, to enforce that. We, we need to, we would need to defer because they would have all that regulation. And, and they have, they have that charge to do that.
So.
Just a little, I've looked into it. They're not gonna be offering any grandfathering giveaways. If they're in violation, you're done.
Of, of those state policies. Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I think there's, uh, definitely it's been brought up that, uh, that would be good to check into that and, and, uh, also, and it doesn't relate to what we do. Again, we're, that's really not the topic per se, but, it is concerning that the kids can get in there and there's not a gate and they can hop in machinery and things. So, please.
I'm a little bit late. So I'm not sure exactly what was said as far as, or the traffic ordinance. Um, can you guys tell me what you guys are proposing in the traffic ordinance part of it? Cause I'm just curious if you could, if they do want to do the residential one. I'm just curious if there's a way to limit the amount of trucks that come in per day even. Cause that would be helpful. Because that would be helpful, just limiting, like a reasonable amount, that would be...
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
Seven and a half minutes.
And... And obey the speed limits, yeah.
My daughter was getting frustrated. She's like, I just wanna show you something on my bike.
Yeah.
She's like, I can't even show you.
Yeah, no, that's good input.
That's not in here right now, but I just wrote that down.
Okay, good. No, you've given us great input. I think at this point, there's a thought of applying all the ideas that were shared tonight in that proposal as far as the safety and limiting trucks and whatever. But there's also the proposal of not allowing mining in the city like Salt Lake City apparently has done. And we don't know if we can do that, but, so this probably will need to be, well, let's talk about it. Let's, I'd like to hear the thoughts of the other people on the council.
Well, I appreciate it. I would, my couple of initial thoughts were is that, Ryan, you mentioned if there is violations, we need to report it. Whose responsibility is that? Is it for the city or is it for the neighbors to contact?
I think anybody is responsible for a violation of things if they have one. If they're aware of that, if you see it, say something. If that's a, if that's a spot you see, then you're a direct witness. If it's, if somebody reports a violation to me and I don't see it, then I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is that, you tell me that's hearsay. I can't, I can't witness something I didn't see. So, we always recommend if there's any violation, speeding, whatever that violation is, report directly who saw it. That's our...
I think from the standpoint of traffic, I would contact the county sheriff's department. That the trucks, if they're coming up there before the time is that they're allowed to be up there, that can be addressed. If they're speeding, that can be addressed. The other issue, yes?
I just had a question. So, if there's no, if there wasn't any ordinance in place, it sounds like for him, and we called the sheriff and said the trucks are here before eight, how do we, you know, if there's no ordinance in place, or is there something just general?
There is a noise ordinance in place. And so if it's a violation of the noise ordinance before the noise hits in the place, then that's a different regulation. And if it's speeding, that's a different regulation. We've obviously added signs to want to remind anybody that's up there. Because we had reports, we've added signage and feedback signs that indicate what speed people are going. Those also record that and tell us what time of day those are and what the speeds were. So, we can track all of that data. So, we're basically studying that traffic now as we have those, those signs are up. And we're certainly watching that, but if somebody's speeding, I mean, obviously, nobody necessarily has a radar gun, but you can watch that, watch that sign. It is a radar gun. We've installed a radar gun, this public, so the public can see what they're going. And both the truck driver and the public can definitely see. We've added radar signs to help say, hey...
We accept, we'll take one.
We don't have one up there. There was one there a couple of years ago.
There's one there today.
On our street, 100?
Uh, coming down...
They're not, they're not going that way.
Coming down 1,000 south.
They're not going down 1,000. They're turning on Grandview.
Yeah, but it's as they come down 1,000 south before they hit Grandview Drive.
There's not one there, unless you put it there today.
There's one on Canyon.
I saw it today, so I know it's there today, but that's all right.
Before you hit Canyon, or before you hit Grandview, going to Canyon?
Yeah, up the road. When they come out of theirs, as they come down that hill, it is a 25 mile or speed limit sign. But I don't mean to argue the point, but we're trying to help some of those pieces to help.
Right, right. Well, and everybody has a camera on their phone, you could take a picture of that.
Sure, sure. If there's a violation, speeding, those kind of violations, you know, those go to the sheriff's department. We don't have a lot of regulation within side of the city. We've contracted a lot of that out. So, unless it's a lead and some regular nuisance ones, we're limited in the violations that we handle inside of our city staff. Most of that has been either contracted out or is a different, contracted a lot of our enforcement out.
Right, okay.
So, I would say with issues about that, traffic issues, things like that, speeding, I would contact the sheriff's department. The next thing is, is you mentioned the air quality up there. I would contact the Department of Air Quality.
Yeah, Division of, it's on Division of Environmental, they have an air quality.
And let them address that concern and then also with the state for the mining issues. If they're really, if the state guidelines are that those aren't being met, then to have someone from the state come up and inspect and make some decisions, then they would take that over, that would be the way to do it. And I think the, from my standpoint, to answer your question about, I would like to see, can we legally adopt that there would be no gravel pit work anymore with the development aspect and that kind of stuff like that going on? And so that would be interesting, that would be something to know. And then the other side is, is that I would, the ordinance that we've been reviewing and so forth, that we take the information that we've had, because this is true life of what's happened out there and the issues that it has, that it's raised and the concerns and safety, safety most especially. And so, I think that we would add those in. And I know everybody's taking notes, so maybe we, maybe we all email Scarlett of what we have or something. And then if we compile that and we, you know, see what is common and work that in to the ordinance. So, we have an ordinance to review with all these additions or we have the option of putting something in that says it just cannot exist in the city of Providence. Then we could, then we could act upon that at one of the next meetings and vote on it and pass it, recommend it to the city council.
Okay, thank you, Michael. No, thank you, very good.
Can I ask a question, Bob?
Yes.
So, if we kept, because there's, there's a lot of material that may have to be hauled in if we prevented the excavation part. Would, I'm just kind of curious, if we just prevented the off-site trucking and allowed somebody, if they were, well, if they don't crush, then they haul it in. They have to haul...
For the road or for homes?
Yep.
Both.
The road and home?
And utilities and so forth.
Yeah.
For different parts, different things.
So, if they crushed onsite, but they didn't haul offsite, and they only crushed enough so that the trucks, so that they didn't have to haul material onsite, I'm just wondering about that. Because that would reduce truck traffic going to the place in the future.
They're not hauling out if they're using it there.
You're right.
And they're not, so, at that point, the other question is, the benefit on the side of developer to do this is if he can crush enough to use, then he doesn't have to haul off pit run and haul back on crushed material. If he can take pit run onsite, crush it down and use it, it reduces the haul off and the return haul. So, that cuts that traffic down completely if they can do that for the amount of material they can use onsite. Now, if it's crushing it to remove it offsite, that becomes a different, maybe piece of the puzzle. But it is, lots of places have the ability to, I mean, these small crushers are fairly small in comparison to crushing operations. And if you can manage to produce the amount you need, you have a significant net decrease effect on the population around you in the traffic spot. And so, if that's one, I mean, that may be a consideration of how do you do that? Because the other option for them, for this particular one we talked about and any of them, if they have a lot of material onsite, they're allowed to haul it off and they're allowed to haul new material on. So, really, this is about processing that material onsite so they don't have to haul it off and haul it back on. They can, we don't have a restriction of hauling off. And then they could process it somewhere else, commercial area, I think was maybe thought about. They can haul it off to a commercial site, process it and then return it to site. And that would have all of that traffic that if they can just produce what they need, use what they need, and then only haul off the pit run out of it that they need to haul off, then they're not hauling back any more than they need. So, that's a, that's the potential benefits of something like this. That's why some, that's why it's not uncommon to have it get in residential areas because they do crush. And so, anyway, we, I mean, to be honest, we crush on your streets. So, we do the same operation when we mill up the road. When we mill your road, we are, we're taking the same spot and milling and using that to create that product taken from the street. And when we take it offsite, we're using a very similar piece of equipment to do that.
Yeah.
We go for one day though.
You're right, you're right, right, please.
Well, so...
I'm the defender argument. I just, I just am saying, the type of equipment, so maybe it's the magnitude. The nice thing with this ordinance is it returns them back at given intervals. Maybe a year mark or six month mark, I don't remember what it was, six months or year?
We haven't put that in.
At some point, a return for reevaluation mark.
Oh, it's annual.
Annual, okay.
Yes.
So, at that point, they have to come back every year for reapproval. Maybe that's a six month mark and say, hey, you know what? If you haven't produced what you need in six months, we want you to maybe remove site so that we can reduce that, so it doesn't become a permanent operation. There, these are just ideas, what you might think about between the two of what we have and the prohibition, there might be some other piece of the puzzle that may be good that is in that benefit and may not be. I throw them out to you as possible consideration.
Right, no, that's good. So, no mining or reverse mining, basically, right? And, but if we did something like that, we would need to have all these things that have been talked about for safety, for the children and so forth, and distance from homes and all those...
That's what staff was bringing to try to help doing some of that, saying, hey, how do we, how do we get there?
Right.
Nothing's perfect, but we've brought something to help move the needle towards that. And this has been great, the night to have some good feedback on some witness statements of what's happening. We don't always have that witness of where it's there, so it's very helpful to have that feedback.
It's good.
One other thing, Bob, this is a conditional use. So, we can, so we have to, the way the state code reads, we have to give them some points to base our conditions off of. But on an individual basis, when someone comes with this, we will, we would consider each property individually. And so there may be certain mitigation that would be placed on somebody that's up in the Highlands area that maybe wouldn't be placed on somebody that's up above Center Street or vice versa. But being a conditional use does give us the ability, doesn't give us the ability to say absolutely not, but it does give us the ability to say, okay, if you're going to do this, how are you going to meet this for your site-specific purpose? And so, we can't, since we can't write every single thing in for every single site, I just want people to be aware that there are some additional things we can require based on a site-specific analysis when it comes in.
Good, good, no, that's good. And it was brought up earlier about whether it's in the middle of a subdivision versus off, there's not a lot of space off the side of the city anymore, but where maybe it won't have the impact it would on a neighborhood or whatever, that you might have different conditions then, so, good. Bob, do you have comments or thoughts?
Just listening to this, do we need to talk with our city attorney about some of these things that we want to add to the ordinance?
The main thing that we need to talk to him about is if we were to prohibit it, period.
Okay.
We just need to make sure that's an option, so...
And if we do prohibit it, that's the end of it at that point, correct?
Well, it's the end of it when phases four and five, when the, before, so when they come in for phase six, they would be told, no, you'll have to haul everything off and then haul processed material back on.
So, it's advantageous if we take care of this ordinance right now?
It's advantageous if we take care of it in the near future, not necessarily right tonight, but, yeah, in the near future.
But again, like I pointed out, Michael said something pretty relevant. Haul in the state, and nothing else is referance. And again, if this is in violation of state level regulation, makes it easy on you all. They're just gonna tell Jeremy, you're done. You're way outside, you know, somebody at state regulate, at a minimum. I would think that'd be a pretty good reference.
Right.
They may not even be aware he's doing it. They may not even be aware he's doing it.
That's what I bet. These days I wanna look at.
And it may fall underneath the size that they regulate too, that he may not have had to inform. I don't know.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
So, from what I'm hearing, and probably everybody's interested in this, this phase five, he moved out, he moved out his quarry operations from phase four down at our end of the street and moved down, doing the exact same thing, just at the other end of the street, not as close to houses, but still, there's a lot of neighbors here that are gonna be impacted and trucks. Trucks are the same. There's, it sounds like there's nothing we can do to stop him from doing the same thing on phase five because it's already been, unless we get the state involved.
Right.
Well, and again, it will depend on how the state's regulations are.
Right.
I mean, they'll tell us, we can just call them and say this is, okay.
Right, because currently we don't have a policy. Even if we did, they would be grandfathered in, so really it's a state thing at this point with that particular...
With all due respect, you don't know that it's grandfathered in. That's the city attorney's call on it. And quite frankly, I think if you passed an ordinance that said no mining in the city and defined it so that you're not exporting product or limit it to an X number of trucks going out to allow the development of the property, I don't think he is grandfathered in. Because you're enacting a mining ordinance, he's doing a subdivision. And once he's through with this phase, he's gonna have to comply with that type of an ordinance. And that's my thought.
Well, future phases, yes.
What's that?
Future phases, definitely.
For the stuff that's approved.
Well, he's almost done with the current phase, isn't he?
Right.
So, why are we worried about the current phase?
Well, he just moved to phase five, right?
Yeah, he just moved all his equipment that he was using, the rock crusher and all the quarry stuff, down to the other end of the street. And it just started immediately exactly like it was at our end of the street.
And how long did it take at your end of the street? Two months, right? So, it could, it could go two or three months.
We're just wondering, is there a way to stop that from happening to those people at that end, what we've got?
I don't know. I'm in, I'm in favor of having no mining in Providence. And, you know, the fact that Salt Lake City passed the ordinance, I don't know if it's gonna stick because, quite frankly, they, they're up in the Canyons area and they did open it up for the LDS church to do the, not the temple, but the conference center on a six-month basis to get the materials to match the temple out of that. So, it's not, but there's no gravel pits. I mean, if you take a look around here, in Ogden, there's no gravel pits. The first one on the south end is South Weber. There's hardly anything in Farmington. The nearest gravel pit outside of Ogden is in Pleasant View and around the mountain. And they're getting all the material from Brigham City and Willard.
There's the one Johnson in Hyrum that you can get.
Oh, yeah, locally. I didn't say anything about Cache County. I'm talking about the Salt Lake Metro Ogden area.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood. I do have one question, sorry. And then I'll be quiet. Is there anything we can do about, is there anything we can do about the huge gravel pits that are piles that are within 50 feet of our poor neighbor's house?
Right.
Because those are of concern.
And again, we don't have a policy apparently right now on that. And so I think the state, if there's a policy that they're not following, that's what, I think that's the direction we need to go right now, I would say, so...
And with the air quality control.
And all the other things you mentioned. So, okay, um, so, um, we appreciate all of your input, and, and so, um, I think at this point, I need a proposal. I think our options might be, and, and not limited to this, but one would be to make the recommendation to the city, uh, council that we don't allow mining, and that this project, I guess we don't know for sure, as Joe said, but maybe grandfathered in through the phase they're in, and then that would be it. Then they would have to follow the policy. But, another one is to allow, um, well, not, not, I, I guess to allow mining and under the, and taking, and I know Scarlett's taken notes and, uh, with all the input that we've had today, creating a policy that, that maybe works there with that. Or somewhere in between, where they can crush, but not leave, not take it off the land and use it, utilize it, which I guess isn't really mining, right? Because they're just using it on their property, so... So they could do that even if we had a no-mining policy, I suppose, so...
I don't know that they couldn't. If it was no-mining, it'd be no-mining. They'd have to figure out how to lay the houses on the, on the ground, but just doing minimum backhoe. I mean, Pleasant View City has an ordinance that says that, that it's not mining if you're digging a foundation.
So I guess we would need a, a definition for mining, what that is.
Yeah.
If we're gonna create a no-mining policy, we need to know what that is, I guess.
I, I would make a motion, uh, and I hope I'm not out of line here, that we table the matter and allow Scarlett to go back and talk to the city attorney about how comfortable he is with a no-mining. And, and also that she adjusts the ordinance per the comments here that she, in her discretion. And that we take a look at both of those at the next planning commission meeting and, and get those to us in time that we can sort of study both of them, uh, before we come to the meeting.
Great.
And, um, and then make a recommendation, try to make a recommendation at the next planning commission.
Okay.
I'm in favor of that.
That was a motion.
That was a motion. I'll second the motion.
That was a motion.
Yeah, just to move it along.
Right. No, I think that's good. And, and so Michael seconds that motion?
Yes.
Any other comments before we vote on that? Okay, those in favor of the motion to table the, uh, decision while we talk with attorneys about maybe having a no-mining policy or Scarlett creating a, a new policy based on the input from today? Correct?
Right.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input today. It's been very helpful. Appreciate that. Some of you are a little out of term, but we let you talk, so... No, we appreciate it. We appreciate it. And so that's, that's all we have for tonight, and, uh, that'll be table till our next meeting, which, uh, we don't know when that is for sure. Maybe in a couple of weeks. Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
I would make a motion that we close the meeting.
Motion to close?
Second.
And a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's opposed, I don't think so. Thank you.